Good evening. I'm Susan Leathers. I'm editor and co-founder of Brentwood Communications, and this is my business partner and co-founder, Kelly Gilfillan. We are so proud to have the distinct honor of hosting this Williamson County Commission Candidates Forum tonight. We are, if you're not familiar with Brentwood Communications, we formed our company five years ago. We launched with BrentwoodHomepage.com. Two years ago, we launched FranklinHomepage.com. And now, in last fall, we launched NolansvilleHomepage.com. We have, we created our company as a hyper-local online news source. We have built our company on being credible and being independent. And it's, we just wanted to also thank Williamson County for letting us have this facility tonight to have this forum, and we appreciate all of the candidates who have come out to be with us and the folks who are here to watch. This will be rebroadcast on Channel 3 throughout the week. Anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, I'm good.
I do have some introductions to make. We are so honored to have Mark Cook, who is the longtime general manager and editor of Williamson AM. Tonight, Mark is going to serve as our moderator. And I'd like to introduce Jessica Pace. Many of you know her. Jessica is our Williamson County reporter. She also covers Williamson County schools. And she'll be reporting on this, and we'll have full reports tomorrow morning. We do want to get started, and I'm going to turn it over to Mark Cook, our moderator, who will talk a little bit about the rules and how we're going to run this tonight. And so let's get started.
All right. Good evening, candidates and all the public that's here to see this tonight and make their decisions, hopefully based on the issues. We have quite a few candidates that are on the bill tonight. And so that means we're going to be moving rather quickly. We are going to ask a question of each person roughly in the order that you're seated. If some of the latecomers show up, we'll throw them in there at some point. We have a couple of questions that are tailored to your areas. The groups that we have are kind of roughly geographically linked. We tried to do rural and suburban, but it didn't work very well together. So we put commission districts together, hopefully that they would have some similarity in the issues that they face. Everyone will have 90 seconds to answer the question. Susan will be the timekeeper, and she has a yellow card that is the warning that there's, how long?
Thirty seconds left.
Thirty seconds left, and then a green card-
This is green for stop.
Rather than a red card, means stop. I've been asked to kind of jump in if you start varying from the question, and so I'll try to keep people on point if that's possible in a polite way. And if we're ready, I'd like to get started. The first group of commissioners are running for seats in Districts 1, 2, and 9. And those are kind of western, southwestern Williamson County?
10, 11, and 12.
10, 11, and 12. Okay, so we're kind of central Franklin area. Okay, my questions are out of order. The first question tonight is for Bob Barnwell. I'm not going to throw in any titles here because we're going to keep it straight up. So, Mr. Barnwell, do you think Williamson Medical Center should be kept or sold? And do you think that the ties of many commissioners to the hospital affect the debate of this question?
Well, personally, there was a vote done a couple of years ago, and it was 15 to, or 19 to 5, to say no. I don't consider it an issue right now. I think it's up to the voter to determine who they have running and determine if they want to vote for people that have a like mindset. Right now, I don't think, it's a dead issue for me, because there's, there's not enough commissioners that are even willing to investigate it. I believe that the private act that established the Hospital Board of Trustees requires commissioners to be on the board.
Yes.
So I think that, I don't, I don't see a problem with that, because they're supposedly representing, they're elected representatives of the people, who should be representing the people on that board.
Thank you very much. We have a different question for Mr. Brian Beathard. As Williamson County sees an increase in infrastructure and population, which is the population expected to reach a million by 2040, I'll be old, and the expansion of the workforce and economic development, do you see the quality of life being compromised? And what do you think we can do to specifically maintain it?
Well, the first question's easy. I think the answer's yes. The second question's much more difficult. With regards to the first part, if, if the infrastructure doesn't keep up, and in my opinion, it hasn't been, then the quality of life, you know, becomes less. There are folks I know who, who love this community, but the, the point of traffic has gotten, and congestion has gotten to the point where they're, they're thinking about moving elsewhere. I talked to a couple in downtown Franklin a month ago who had always dreamed of living in Franklin, had a realtor take them around one weekend, and they said the traffic alone would prevent them from moving here. We are going to continue to have growth. We've got to make sure we've got infrastructure that keeps up with that growth. How we do that's a very difficult task, because it involves the city, it involves the county, and involves the state. And working amongst those three can become daunting at, at best.
All right. Thank you very much. Next question for Neil Cossey. Williamson County attracts a lot of young families with school-aged children. Specifically, what can you do to address the needs of other demographics, like the senior citizen population of Williamson County? How will you prepare for Williamson County's future residents?
Education, to me, is of the primary importance. I think, I think education should be supported first and foremost by the parents, and then their support structure come from the local schools, and then that, again, supported from the state as far as funding. And I don't think the federal government needs to be involved in it at all. I think that the, you, there's a, there's a, we're having a disservice to our children when we teach them a lot of technical things, but not the basic character building of how to work, how to, how to succeed. We can get a lot of information. The information is overload right now. Secondary on the, on the citizens, senior citizens especially, I'm very familiar with that. I have, my father-in-law and my mother, both are living with us. They're senior, and they're high, high care. Both of them have a little bit of dementia. So I understand the, the way and, and the reason it's extremely important that the local community can support local senior citizen structures and infrastructures to help, help those senior citizens if they can't and don't have that type of family support.
Thank you very much. The next question going to Brandon Ryan. Now that the Chamber of Commerce has consolidated and taken on most economic development functions, does the county still need to offer incentive packages to attract new businesses and corporations?
Well, Mark, first of all, thank you for having us here this evening. I know we all appreciate the opportunity to speak with our constituents. In terms of any incentives, it certainly would depend on, you know, a case-by-case scenario. Generally speaking, I am in favor of such incentives if it, if there is strong, strong job growth that is attached to such incentives. I think this commission has done, has actually done a very good job with that in the past. Mars, most recently, I think we've done a nice job of tying the particular required job growth with the incentives. And I think Williamson County is seen as a very business-friendly environment, and I, I believe those incentives are part of that.
Thank you. For Dana Osbrooks, I skipped this question for the last person. The county is half a billion dollars in debt, yet it has a triple-A bond rating. Are you concerned about the current level of county debt, and do you think there should be a cap?
I think all of us that live here and work here in Williamson County should be concerned that our debt is growing. However, you mentioned the other part that I also find impressive and something to keep in mind, and that is that we still have a triple-A bond rating. We have an independent company who is analyzing that, and Williamson County, City of Franklin, City of Brentwood, some of the few places in the state of Tennessee with that triple-A bond rating, tells me that we are growing. We are managing debt, but we definitely need to be mindful. We only have so many resources. We need to make sure that we are using those resources appropriately. That is always the challenge, to be good stewards of the money that the taxpayers entrust to the county commission. As far as a debt ceiling, I believe was the second part of your question-
Yeah.
-or a cap, that is not something that I am familiar with Williamson County having, but I do think that that would be something to look at if that is in the best interest of the county.
All right. Thank you very much. Steve Smith, glad to see you tonight. Last year, a motion was defeated to provide the public with an annual financial snapshot of Williamson County. Would you support a reexamination of that issue? And in your opinion, what responsibility do you have as a county commission to educate the public on the county's debt and expenditures?
Thank you, Mark. I appreciate it. Thank y'all for doing this, and I apologize for being tardy. I had to be in Cool Springs at 5:30, and at rush hour, I knew that was going to be a problem. But, yes, at the time, I don't think we had the ability and had enough thought put into providing that information in that way to go ahead and move forward with it. I don't have any problem at all with providing that information. I think it's a good idea. And I think from, from an infrastructure standpoint internally, if we can find a way to, to provide certain pieces of information, all the information is public and is available to anybody who wants to look at it. But I think providing that information in an easily accessible way to the public is a, is a fine idea, and I would support that.
All right. Let's go back around the table here, and we have Matt Williams, who has joined us. Mr. Williams, property tax increase aside, what are some ways in which the county can reduce debt and spending in departments like the Sheriff's Department did by purchasing used cars from out-of-state for the Patrol Division? Do you have any other ideas on how the county can save money similar to that?
Do I have to push anything, or is it just talk? I'm sorry.
You're on.
I'm like Steve, running a little tardy this afternoon, coming from downtown Nashville. Took a little while to get here. You know, honestly, as a new candidate coming on, I don't necessarily know all the intimate details that are going on with, with the commission's been involved with. You know, what I can offer is that I've got some federal experience and some state experience in reducing inefficiencies. And, you know, I would definitely just use that experience to start looking at, you know, different activities that are going on. But specifically, no, I don't have any ideas at the moment.
Okay. Thank you very much. Travis Hawkins, also glad to see you here tonight. Citizens who live in the more rural areas of Williamson County sometimes say that they feel removed from the hub of Franklin and Brentwood, and some have expressed a desire for county-wide public transportation. What are your thoughts on a public transportation system? And do you see this as something the county should get involved in?
Well, thank you, Mark. And full disclosure, you and I used to work together over at the Tennessean.
But neither of us work there anymore.
Neither of us work there anymore, but it's good to see you. I'm, I'm a big supporter of, of public transportation, as well as, you know, getting somewhere walking, you know. The closer you can be to, to where you have to go, work-wise, play-wise, the, really, the better, in my opinion. I think it's, it's good for our lifestyles, it's good for our health, it's good for our, our pocketbooks. I know that the City of Franklin has undertaken public transportation, and I, I can't tell you what their numbers are like. I don't know exactly, but I certainly would be willing to study it for, for some of the people that live in the outlying areas. I'm certainly for some kind of public transportation to get them where they need to be. I'm not, I'm not opposed to it.
All right. Mr. Barnwell, do you see the county Parks and Recreation Department as a public asset or as a function that could potentially be privatized?
Well, given the, the size of it today, I doubt it could be privatized immediately. There are probably chunks that could be taken and privatized. I think one of the things about Williamson County that makes it unique is the quality of our life. And the quality of life is predicated by the Parks and Rec Department for a lot of people. It's a relatively inexpensive way to entertain. It allows families to get their children involved in sports, and I think it's a general overall benefit. Several years ago, prior to us building the, the rec center down in Spring Hill, a couple of us got with the Y and tried to get them to go into Spring Hill, so the county did not have to go into Spring Hill. They didn't want to do that. So it's, it's up to the county. I mean, I'm, I'm a philosophy that the role of government is to do what the private sector will not or cannot do, and that was a classic example. They would not do it. So I think we have to balance it with, with private sector, but it's, it's quite difficult to get them to step up to the plate.
Mr. Beathard, what measures can the county take to address traffic issues that come with growth and economic and commercial activity, like in Brentwood and Franklin?
That's kind of the same question twice, isn't it?
Did I?
Again, I, I think traffic is, is one of the Achilles' heels of Williamson County. It is something that we have to do something about, but there are no ideas on the table right now, because there's so much of it that involves the state. Our state is, is one of the few states that does not go into debt for highway projects. And with the economy we've had over the last four or five years, there's not been a lot of room for new projects. And Williamson County has certainly felt that. There's the city as well, and then the county. And you can have a road, a stretch of road, three miles long, in which part of the necessary work on that road would be a city project, part of it would be a county project, part of it would be a state project. And the difficulties, the bureaucracy of getting that accomplished is, is, again, daunting. As a commissioner, I, you know, I will always listen as much as I can to ideas from the constituents from elsewhere. Recently, I went on a Vision City trip. Forty-five folks from the county and the City of Franklin went to Carmel, Indiana. They've done an impressive job with their roads, their traffic, their congestion. They have virtually none. Same-sized community, but they've been able to tackle that project and, and do so in a positive way. So we're looking, we're looking for ideas, and I'm, I'm open with both ears to hearing any suggestions.
All right. Thank you very much. Neil Cossey. Given that education accounts for more than half the county's budget, and with new schools going up in Nolansville, how are you going to balance the need for other things, such as the Criminal Justice Center, larger juvenile court facility? Would you see the need for a property tax increase to handle these things above and beyond schools, or is that off the table?
You have to understand all the facts and understand the, the magnitude of our educational system right now is growing so fast. I think, to the tune, I think Dr. Looney said something like a thousand kids a, a year or so. So we have to take that into consideration when we, when we build new schools, to make sure that we can accommodate those with the best schools possible. In order to do that, sometimes you have to have brick and mortar. Now, I'm all for having new schools, but we also have to be very prudent when we build them. Some of them get a little elaborate, and some of them can get very costly, when they shouldn't really have to be. Also, when it comes to the, to the, to the schools, we're on a projected path. I mean, if we, if you, if you run a curve, you can see that, you know, you can extrapolate our growth. I don't think that's going to continue indefinitely. So we have to be very mindful that we don't overbuild too soon. And as far as the other things, I think anything as far as law enforcement, any kind of capital projects that we have, we need a minimum of three to five quotes, and they have to be scrutinized very, very closely. Thank you.
Thank you. Brandon Ryan. Candidates say they support local schools, but what exactly does that mean to you? Have you read Williamson County's strategic plan? And how can you help the district realize those goals and that vision?
Well, I don't think you'll ever run into anybody that says they don't support education. Certainly, we all do. I think the definition of supporting education may be different from one person to, to the next. In terms of reading the strategic plan, certainly well aware of their strategic plan in terms of their capital improvements. But, you know, I believe in terms of supporting education, in my mind, is we need to make sure that the, the kids are provided the best, the highest level of educators with teachers that, that can teach them. Now, does that mean that we have to build $60 million high schools? No, I don't, I don't believe that we have to, to build out in that regard. I've been a long proponent of, that we need to build our schools larger, and that, that will save us money in terms of the capital cost with land acquisition and, and the bricks and mortar, quite frankly. But I, I believe the, the best thing that we can do is continue to take a look at providing the best type of teachers that, that we can right now. In my mind, that's how you support education.
Thank you. Dana Osbrooks. Let's stay on education. We have a high school that was not $60 million. It's pretty close to here. It is going to be called Renaissance High. It educates 1.6% of the high school students in Williamson County. Do you think an, an experimental alternative high school is worth it? Mr. Ryan just said that maybe we should build bigger. This is smaller. Do you think that's worth the expense here?
I will echo Mr. Ryan's sentiment in that I think there are few people who are not going to be for the high qual, continuing the high quality of education we've come to expect in Williamson County. And that includes teaching all of the children. I have been lucky in the last two years to be an adjunct professor at Columbia State at the Williamson County campus, and I've seen firsthand different students learn in different ways. So while I appreciate it is a smaller population that may be represented by Renaissance High, I appreciate also that we've done a couple of things, the county has. They are reutilizing a building that is already in existence, instead of creating a new brick and mortar building. In addition, they are providing the best level of education while it is a smaller population. If that's the education that that population needs, and we have the tools in which to give it to them, then yes, I'm going to be someone who is going to speak up and voice for a strong education system.
Thank you very much. Steve Smith, you missed this one before. Do you think Williamson Medical Center should be kept or sold? Is it worth what we pay for it? Does it fulfill its mission? And do you think that some commissioners' ties to the hospital can affect the debate of this question?
Well, let me say upfront, for anyone who doesn't know, I work at Williamson Medical Center, so I can be viewed as biased on this issue. I do think, though, it gives me some insight into the, to the issue. The county does not fund the hospital, nor does it manage the hospital. The hospital has an independent board of trustees that is specified by the state charter that was granted back in 1957, that specifies that the county mayor, as it exists now, serves on that board, and up to four county commissioners can serve on that board. What that does is give some members of the county commission some oversight into the operation of the hospital. In fact, since the county does not fund the hospital, but it does benefit financially from a number of things that the hospital does, such as providing support for the county ambulance service, providing indigent care, if it were to become a financial burden on the county, it's something you would have to look at. Since it's not, I don't think the people in the community want to turn their community-focused hospital over to a Wall Street hospital chain that's going to be answering to shareholders.
All right. Thank you very much. I'd like to continue with two more questions for the candidates that stepped in and only got one question each. After that, we'd like to open it up for a 30-second summation from each of you. Let's start with Matt Williams. What are some ways you can develop stronger communication, collaborative skills, and a sense of unity between municipal governments and the county commission?
Well, I'll tell you, let's take the city alderman, for example, with Franklin. You know, I've talked around, and, you know, outside of about four official meetings that happen a year, there's really very little communication that goes on. It's isn't rocket science. I mean, all it takes is some emails and some phone calls with each other to kind of coordinate and create some synergies that are going on between the two legislative bodies. And as I've been inquiring quite a bit about that, it really doesn't exist right now. So, I mean, you know, like I said, it's not rocket science to figure that out. Just some initiative to go out there and actually make the attempt to try and, you know, understand what the two legislative bodies are doing, and that we do have synergy. You know, it just takes some effort.
All right. Thank you very much. And Travis Hawkins, let's give you the, would you think that, that a property tax increase, if all is status quo for the time being, would be off the table if the needs of things like the Sheriff's Department and other functions of county government are being neglected in favor of our spending on the schools, in your opinion?
What's the question?
Okay. I freelanced that one. The question is basically, at what point would you think that a tax increase would be warranted in county government?
Well, you know, I'll start by saying that I voted against the property tax increase a few years back, when we raised it 23 cents. And I stand by that vote today. I'm not going to say that you, we'd never do it. I'm not going to say that I would never do it, because you have to, you know, you have to adapt. I don't think we needed to do it then. If, if things were, I think what I'm hearing you say is that if, if things begin to get dilapidated, would I consider a property tax increase? And of course I would. I mean, I'm not going to say never. I'm just going to say, not without a fight, and not without a very, very urgent need for raising taxes, will I do it. And my record is, is not doing it. I'm going to be reluctant, but sure, if, if things got bad, you know, you have to leave yourself open to that, because government has to operate.
All right. Thank you very much. Now, let's go for some 30-second summations. Thirty seconds is not a long time, but we'd like to hear how you feel as a candidate and what you're looking for if you are elected or re-elected. Commissioner Bob Barnwell.
Okay. Well, to, to close, I'd like to thank you all for having us here this evening. And I would like to say that as a retired CPA, I do look at your tax dollars very closely. And as chairman of the Education Committee, I also am very strong proponent of our educational system, which leads to what we mostly have here in this community. And I would respectfully ask for the votes of the people watching on TV tonight on May the 6th.
All right. Thank you. Brian Beathard.
I echo the thanks for having this. When I ran four years ago, there were no forums for county commissioners, and we've had several. I appreciate this one, as well as the others. My name's Brian Beathard. I'm running again as an independent. Four years ago, I, I ran as an independent and was fortunate enough to, to win my seat. This, this is a wonderful county that we live in, no doubt about it. I think it's important to know that it didn't get there by accident. It got there from- Um, it got there from other commissioners and other elected officials who've done a tremendous job over the last twenty, thirty years, well before I came in.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Neil Kosse, thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds. Okay. Um, first off, thanks, Mark, and, and, uh, thanks, Brentwood, for having us. My name's Neil Kosse. Um, I'm running as a Republican. Uh, I was a little bit late to the party. I'm a newcomer to this. Uh, I am a write-in candidate, and I appreciate, uh, just press the button and type me in for a write-in candidate. Um, so, um, that's about all I can say.
All right. Thank you very much. Brandon Ryan.
Well, Mark, again, thank you. Uh, I appreciate, uh, the opportunity to, to address the voters. I also appreciate you bringing up the taxpayer education card and the debt cap, both resolutions that I introduced to this commission. Unfortunately, both failed. Uh, but, uh, I like to believe that I am also a defender of the taxpayer, as, as Bob has mentioned. Um, and also to, to my co-commissioners' comments, I do believe that Williamson County is a wonderful place, and I think our conservative ideals have made it what it is. And when I say that, I'm not talking about the commission, I'm talking about the conservative ideals of the, of the population. And so, my name's Brandon. It's been an honor serving, Brandon Ryan. It's been an honor serving, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Dana Osbrooks, thirty.
Thank you. And I want to thank you for having this forum tonight. This has been an excellent opportunity to, for us to have some questions and to provide some answers. Once again, I'm Dana Osbrooks, running in the twelfth district. This is the first time that I've run for office, and, um, I want Williamson County, place where I grew up, the place where I own a small business and live, to remain a great place to work, live, and raise the family. Appreciate your vote on May sixth, running as a Republican in the Republican primary.
Thank you very much. Steve Smith.
Thank you, Mark, and again, thanks for having us. Um, yeah, as a, as a former investment banker with a finance degree and an MBA, and a former city alderman and a sitting county commissioner, I think I have the education and experience to be a good representative, uh, for the people of the twelfth district and the county. Uh, I enjoy representing the district and would appreciate your vote in the May sixth primary.
All right. Matt Williams.
Well, I'll start off by thanking everybody. I've, I've honestly loved every minute of it. Um, you know, I'm originally from here, born and raised. Uh, my, my parents were county commissioners for twenty years and kind of a unique, uh, position because I've got some historical spec- perspective over the debates and the decisions that have happened along the way to get us to where we are. But at the same time, I can also bring a fresh perspective, uh, as a representative of that next generation, so we can maybe, uh, try and crack some of these old problems in some new ways. But, um, you know, after I've gone off and served our country for, uh, for several years, and I'm back home in the community, I want to continue that service there, so I'd appreciate their vote.
Thank you very much. Travis Hawkins, thirty seconds.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you for having this debate, or forum, I should say. Um, I, my name's Travis Hawkins, once again, and, um, I think the next four years in Williamson County are going to be really exciting. Uh, they're also going to be very challenging for this body. Uh, we're going to have to respond to the continued growth, the, uh, a thousand new school-aged kids a year, roughly, and, uh, we've got to respond in the right way, and we got to do it, um, we got to do it fast. And I, I've been here for four years. I'd like another four, and I'm, I'm excited about serving, and thanks for your vote.
All right. Thank you very much. If the candidates would exit to my right and your left, um, we are going to see the candidates for districts one, two, and nine. The county Republican primary is May sixth, by the way, and, uh, all of the Republican candidates will be on that ballot, and the, uh, independents will be on the full ballot in August. So, early voting continues through, what, tomorrow? Or if you're watching this on Monday, you missed it. Go May sixth. Uh, if you could just take a seat, um...
No. I don't think they're supposed to... I don't think they're supposed to leave anybody on our... You start hearing them? Yes. Let's do that one more, please? Because you, you would be hurting us. If you were, um, I... Say that there are three bios of all the candidates here. If any of them in the audience would like them, then all the election bios will be available at, on the election twenty-fourteen sections on all of our websites.
Okay.
Oh, no!
All right. I guess we have a small number of candidates for districts one, two, and nine. Uh, I see, uh, nine, a two, a two, and no card, a two.
Judy, here, she has one.
Sorry about that. Um, we have bios of all the candidates, and if you're here in the audience there to my right, you can come pick one up. And if you are watching at home or want to check them later, they're on all the Brentwood, Nolansville, and Franklin homepage sites, the election twenty-fourteen part of that. There are two pages of those. All right. We have, uh, a small but passionate group of candidates right now, and, um, so we will start with Judy Herbert as the first candidate from this group. And the question is, recently, the county commission dealt with some issues related to property zoning and development in the Del Rio Pike Old Hillsborough areas, just months after a countywide master land use plan was created. Do you think this controversy about the Bob Parks subdivision, as the signs call it, was, does that mean that the planning process was flawed in some way? Please share your principles and standards for choosing between development and preservation.
Okay. You know, there were several meetings, community meetings about the, the planning and zoning, so I felt like the community had a chance to voice their opinion on all of those. I think this was something that came up later on, and how it was zoned. I do feel like it was handled appropriately because they were, the county commissioners were asked to vote on rezoning. We voted exactly what the residents of the community wanted for each particular place. I do think that that is a problem in Williamson County like anywhere. You know, you have developers that want to develop, and you have people in their community that want to be the last one there, and they want to look out and see all the cows. But you've got developers that, and people that want to sell their land, so that will always be a problem, I think. Um, you know, I guess you just have to take it on a case-by-case basis.
All right.
Thank you.
Uh, the next question is for Betsy Hester. Property tax increase aside, what are some ways in which the county can reduce debt and spending in departments?
Uh, thank you, Mark, and thank you, Kelly, and I appreciate Susan. I appreciate y'all having this forum tonight. As far as reducing expenses, you mentioned one earlier. The sheriff's department has gone to the state of Kansas to buy used sheriff patrol cars for our deputies. That's one way we can save money. And within the school budget, our school budget is quite large, so I think I would call upon the, the people on the school board and our school officers to constantly look for ways there that money can be saved within their budget. Now, what we have done is we have not had, uh, increases in salaries. We've had a freeze in salaries. We've had a hiring freeze, and we have hired a few part-time employees who did not have benefits, so that the, uh, we didn't have negative situations as far as the work getting done, but we did have money-saving, cost-saving in those areas. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, for Victoria Jackson, um, what measures do you think the county can take to address traffic issues that come with new growth in areas with high residential and commercial growth?
Well, my relative is moving out of Spring Hill because of the traffic jam, so it hits me personally, and they are expanding the road as far as I've noticed. Uh, I'm new here, and this is a fantastic county, and I love it. I thought I died and went to heaven when we moved here a year ago, and so I don't know all of the specific details, but I'm worried about my country, and so I jumped into the local government to try to help save it from socialism. Um, the traffic jams widen the roads. Uh, I, I love the ruralness of the area, so I really don't want, uh, a new road going past my new house that my husband, the policeman, and I saved up for our whole lives to live in the rural place. Look at the cows, and they're talking about a new road going right past Cameron Farms to hit sixty-five. So, I'm personally involved, and I can see both sides, and, um, I don't know, I'm not an expert on highways. I guess widening a road is a good way to make more cars go on it.
All right. Thank you very much. Michael Myers, who is the only candidate from District Nine to be here, um, given that education accounts for more than half the county's budget, that's about sixty-something percent, how do you balance the need for other infrastructure needs like public safety?
It's going to be hard when one, one part of your job is such a huge bite out of it, sixty-something percent, almost three-hundred million dollars. I mean, that's terrific. So, I think you're always going to have this tension between the county commission and the school board because the school board has their mission. And the county commission, its mission is to hang on to as much money as they can to meet the needs of all those other people. There's two-hundred thousand of us, and a whole lot of that, it has nothing to do with schools. But, uh, it's, it's a serious challenge, and I don't, it's something that you just, I think everyone, I, I think the, the way it works in the budget process, where everyone has to stand their ground and defend their, their need, is, uh, there's nothing wrong with that, and I think that's what it's going to take.
All right. Thank you very much. Judy Herbert, how do you think, uh, State Route eight forty will impact traffic and development on roads like Carter's Creek Pike, Pinewood Road, et cetera? Um, and based on the land use plan, um, do you think that growth is desirable at those interchanges?
Well, I guess I got a personal tide. Eight forty took part of my driveway when it was first built.
Right. And in the eastern part of the county.
Right. And so, it, it changed my life tremendously, and I ended up moving because of eight forty. Um, I don't know, you know, I was here when I sixty-five was built, and there were areas that, that developed quickly, and then other areas that sat there for forty years and didn't develop. But I'm sure it will affect all of the areas as it grows, but it's like anything else. If you don't have the infrastructure for, like, sewer and septic, it's only, can grow so much. Um, I guess it's all a matter of opinion whether you consider, you know, good for the county or not.
Should the county get into the wastewater business?
Uh, no. I think that is way too much money for what the county needs to be involved in.
All right. Thank you. Betsy Hester, next question is for you. Um, last year, a motion was defeated to provide the public with an annual financial snapshot of Williamson County. Would you support a reexamination of that issue? And in your opinion, what responsibility do you have as a commission to educate the public on the county's debt and expenditures?
Thank you. Yes, that was introduced, uh, last year, and I think it was an excellent idea. I think that our county website should have a snapshot of our debt and a, uh, a diagram of why we have that debt and, uh, long-term capital improvement programs and things of that nature. I, I did not support the snapshot because I was afraid that that would cause more expense on the county. You know, ideas are great, but when they are, when they wind up being expensive ideas because of more labor, more materials, more time, and just generally more expenses, then I, I can't support that good idea. But I do think that our citizens should know about our debt load and exactly what we're spending on building new schools for our new citizens who move into the county. Thanks.
Victoria Jackson, uh, let's go talk more about that debt load. It's about, uh, half a billion dollars right now for the county, yet there isn't triple-A bond rating, meaning basically you got a, a credit card limit, and everybody's fine with what you're spending.
Same as our federal government.
Are you, well, are you concerned about this, and do you think it should be capped?
Oh, yes. I don't believe in debt. Um, that's one of the biggest problems in America and Williamson County, and it's over five-hundred-and-fifty million because you're building three schools in Nolansville, and there's another two-hundred million, uh, I forget, but it's basically around eight-hundred million. And, um, I think we should cut waste and sell assets, sell the medical center. I don't think the government should be in the private business sector. That is socialism. Um, the government should provide safety, cops, fire, and roads, and should not be buying gyms and theaters, and, uh, there's a lot of rich people in Williamson County who could do that. Uh, so I think the debt is the number-one concern for the commissioners, and they should not keep agreeing with Anderson and raising property taxes.
Okay. Uh, you just took care of about three questions. But our property taxes haven't been raised in...
They were told that they were raised three times in a row. Oh, and that everyone just agrees with Anderson, so I, that's not true. They have not been, property taxes have not raised three times in a row? Yes or no? How many people out there say they have been raised three times? Well, there's a fact out there somewhere, but we should not be in debt. That's a very bad way to run anything.
Thank you very much. Okay, Michael Myers. Citizens in the more rural areas of Williamson County sometimes say they feel removed from the hub of Franklin and Brentwood, and have, some have expressed a desire for countywide public transportation. What are your thoughts on a public transportation system run by the county or supported by the county in some way?
I think there may be some need there, especially with some, um, elderly people out in the rural areas. Uh, I don't have a, I mean, I'd be willing to explore that. I don't, I'm not sure that it could be economically feasible, uh, really and truly. I don't think the one that Franklin runs really is economically feasible. I believe it's supported by grants, the feds, but, uh, I certainly would be willing to look at that. Maybe something on a limited basis would, could be done.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, everybody's had two questions, and we're going to go for the thirty-second summations. Thirty seconds isn't very long, but if you're ready to go, Judy Herbert, can you give us thirty seconds on your campaign and your hopes for the county if you are elected?
Okay. I'm Judy Lynch Herbert. I am a sitting third district commissioner, which I have been rezoned, which most of the third district is now called the second district. Um, I'm a seventh-generation Williamson County. I re, my father was the commissioner for thirty-seven years, and I ran in his seat and won four years ago. So, I'm here for the past, present, and future of the county. I'm not here for what's happening right now. I'm, I'm going to be here to the day I die, and I want to make sure when I make decisions, it's going to be for down the road also, as a lot of our previous commissioners have done, that made this county such a great place to live.
All right. Thank you very much. Betsy Hester.
Thank you. I'm Betsy Hester, and I am running on the Republican primary. I've, uh, lived in this county for thirty-six years, and I've served in my neighborhood as a homeowners' association president, and that is why I got into politics. I've served for eight years, and really more than a politician, I am a public servant. I believe in keeping our schools strong. Both my children went through the public school system here in Williamson County. I believe in supporting our senior citizens and also our public safety and watching your tax dollars.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Victoria Jackson, thirty seconds.
I'm Victoria Jackson. Um, I just moved here. I've invested a lot. I followed my grandchildren here. My daughter's in college, my son-in-law works at Lifeway, um, so my whole family's, my husband's retiring here after thirty-three years as a helicopter police pilot in Miami, and I love the way this town is, and you people did a great job, and I just want to get involved in my community. I want to represent Tea Party... I wanna represent Tea Party constitutional conservative values, which I see lacking in the Capitol. I'm fighting Common Core and Agenda 21. You can see my views at VictoriaJackson.com.
Thank you very much. Michael Myers.
Yes, sir. Thank you for having us. I'm a longtime resident of Williamson County, almost 40 years. I've married into a family that has roots here that go down over a century. I've owned three businesses in the Grassland community. So the people in Ninth District know me. I think they know I'm a good man, a reasonable man, and I think I can represent all these different facets of our community out there. And I hope people will support me with their vote. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, commissioners from Departments Two and District Nine. We're about to seat our third group, which is... That would be Three, Four, and Five.
Probably three and seven, three and two then. Oh, nope. We got...
Just one over there. So we have to sit.
It's okay if they're split.
We wanna start from here and then work down, or go that way, or which way you wanna go? Does it matter?
Three.
Three, four. What?
I'm Three. I'm District Three. What do you have? What are we, Kelly?
Hey, Matt. We'll hunt over here.
All right, we'll go over there.
And then you three.
There we go. You didn't read the memo, Elliot.
No.
If everybody's ready, we're ready to get started again.
Unless he turned it off.
Yellow. Okay. All right. You all know the procedure. You've got 90 seconds. The yellow card comes up at when you got 30 left, and the green card comes up when we're ready to move on. So let's start with Tommy Little. Now that the Chamber of Commerce has consolidated and taken on economic development functions that the county used to handle, does the county still need to offer incentive packages to attract new businesses and corporations?
I think yes. And it's good to remember that how we have done it. One, the school portion has never been forgiven or rebated. It is only the other parts. It's also connected to job growth, and it's investigated very thoroughly. And there are penalties built into the new packages that if the job growth don't create, then that the taxes are not abated. But I think, yes, it is good to draw those type of companies here, like Mars, like Verizon, like Nissan. And the tax abatements are prorated over the years, and then after a few years, they do end up, they are paying full part. But yes, it brings growth, it brings economic growth, and it increases our tax base.
All right. Thank you very much. Lou Green, what can you address, specifically, what can you do to address the needs of possibly less-served demographics like senior citizens in Williamson County, since so much of the county budget goes for young families with school-aged children? What about the other demographics in the county as the county grays? How will you prepare for Williamson County's future?
Well, thanks for having us at this forum. And to answer your question, I think one, what you're saying is with all the young families that are moving into the county, and that seems to be the one with the biggest voice to have something. Being a senior citizen myself, to have an opportunity out there, I think that we have different segments of the community, such as in Nolansville, they're building a facility for senior citizens. And I think that's something that each community wants to take on in itself because of the zoning that's involved in some of those. Sometimes, when you look at the infrastructure and what have you to facilitate a senior citizen group, home group type thing, enters into that. And I think that it needs attention because there's different needs for different people within the county dependent upon their age bracket. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Greg Lawrence, Williamson County is half a billion dollars in debt, yet it has a AAA bond rating. Are you concerned about this level of county debt, and do you think there should be a cap?
Thank you, Mark, and thank you for Brentwood Communications for having this forum tonight. Yes, the answer to that question is yes, I am. AAA bond ratings are nice to have, but they can be lost. Our federal government used to have a AAA bond rating, and it doesn't anymore. So just because we have it today doesn't mean we'll have it tomorrow. The problem that we have is our debt is increasing every year. Even though we're paying off some of the debt, we're borrowing more than we're paying off. So the debt is going, is continuing to go up. At some point, we will get close to the point where we may end up not being able to keep that AAA rating. So I would, I would support a cap on the debt that would give us a speed hump, if you will, that has to be overridden by a two-thirds majority of the commissioners. That would basically give us a big red light to say, wait a minute, do we need to go over this limit? Because we may be getting close to losing our AAA bond rating.
Thank you very much. Elliot Mitchell, well, you are from Spring Hill, which is moving out toward Bethesda and so forth, and probably toward Thompson Station in Burrwood. And do you think that the county's planning mechanism to create commercial nodes in areas like Carter's Creek Pike and Grassland, and do you think that's effective? Do you think it's desirable? Should there be more commercial in the unincorporated areas?
The county commercial is always at risk of annexation. So whenever, the part of the challenge when the county builds commercial area and it starts getting the full benefit of sales tax, municipalities come in and incorporate it or annex it, and then the county only gets a percentage at that point of that sales tax. So it is a problem for the county to, how do you have growth and commercial growth and build a second revenue stream outside of your property tax without municipalities all of a sudden seeing it as easy pickings, if you will? The state has passed a law recently that somewhat stifles the ability of cities and municipalities to annex just on their whim without some type of additional vote or the people being annexed having a say. So to get to your question, yeah, I think that the county needs to look for ways of opening up additional revenue streams. I think commercial growth is a way for the county to realize sales tax, so they're not 100% or 80% dependent upon property tax as their only revenue stream. So I think, yes, I think that's a good strategy for the county.
Okay. Thank you very much. I lost a question, I think.
That's what you get for ad-libbing mine.
I know it. Thank you. Matt Milligan, what are some measures you can take to help foster a more collaborative working relationship between the Williamson County Highway Department and municipalities in regard to road infrastructure? There was an incident in Franklin, for example, where Spencer Creek was annexed on both sides by Franklin and left for the county in the middle. How can you fix that relationship so that road projects are not piecemealed between county and city?
You know, that's a great question. And thank you, Mark, Susan, and Brentwood Communications for having us. My name's Matt Milligan. I'm running for county commissioner in the Third District at Spring Hill, and this is an area that's important for Spring Hill. We've exploded in growth, but our infrastructure has remained mostly stagnant, and the three gentlemen sitting in front of you suffer every day when we travel home, as do our constituents. It is imperative that this commission be able to work with municipalities. And already, I've started doing that as I've been preparing my campaign. I've met with the local alderman in Spring Hill, and what we're doing is coming up with ways to pool our money for projects to widen roads and create ways to get traffic flowing freely at the state, county, and city levels going forward, which is imperative for our town.
All right. Thank you very much. David Pear, also from District Three. Candidates say they support local schools, but what does that mean to you? Have you read Williamson County Schools' strategic plan, and how can you help the district realize its goals and visions?
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out and for having us here. The second question, I have not completely read the strategic plan. I've read bits and pieces of it. I think the way that you can involve yourself in local schools is to start asking questions, get involved, work with, meet with school board members to try to find out what it is they need to improve education for all the county schools. And, you know, go in with no preconceived notions or ideas or thoughts, and have an open mind.
So that means you don't think that the spending is excessive in the school system?
I don't think spending per pupil. It's about mid-level, I believe, compared to the other 94 counties. Williamson County is negatively impacted by how the funding formula, which determines who gets what money. I think looking at working with a legislative delegation to tweak the BEP to where Williamson County doesn't, in a sense, subsidize some of the smaller, more rural counties across the state, would be one way, I think, that could address some of those issues.
All right. Thank you very much. Tommy Little, many citizens who live in rural Williamson County have expressed a desire for countywide public transportation system. Do you support the county either creating or supporting a public transportation system that would go to the farthest reaches of the county?
We can explore it. I think at this point in time, it may be financially unfeasible to start. We do have some van pool programs through the TMA Group that are very successful and self-supporting, that offer transportation and van pooling to different places. The county, down the road, we probably will have to, but I think it is in the future. I don't know that we're ready for it right now.
All right. Thank you very much. Lou Green, with all the reputation of Williamson County schools, how do you feel about charter schools coming to Williamson County?
Thanks. As far as charter schools, I think they would serve a purpose. I would have to really examine the situation as to the need. I know Metro's going through this right now, trying to get their arms around it. But as far as having a charter school, I don't, right now, I would say with the education system we have right now, that is by far better than most around in the county, in the state. And if there's a need, sometimes they can serve that need, much as Renaissance School, which we have, serves a need, a specific need. And I'm all in favor of that, and I'm in favor of the school in itself. So if there's an opportunity here that somebody wants to come in with a charter school, I think they're in a competitive situation and competing with our schools. I think they'd have to be an exceptional school to survive.
All right. Thank you very much. Greg Lawrence, do you see the county parks and recreation department as a public asset or a function that could be privatized?
In general, I'm opposed to government competing with the private sector, and I do believe that the rec centers compete with the private sector, YMCA's and so forth. We have them, so the question would be what to do with them. I think if we are gonna run them, they should be self-sustaining, and right now, they're not. My understanding is we are subsidizing the rec centers to the tune of $10 million a year. So my position would be that the rec centers need to pay for themselves if we're gonna run them. And I believe we can do that by doubling the fees. If we just doubled the fees for the rec centers, then the rec centers would be self-sustaining. We would save $10 million a year, and we would still be less than half of the cost of the YMCA. So we'd still be very competitive, but the rec centers would pay for themselves.
Another recreation question for Elliot Mitchell. How do you feel about the progress of county parks, such as the one near Pinewood Road in the Burrwood area, the one on the Natchez Trace Parkway? Is this something that is being neglected or put on the shelf for later, or is it moving at a pace that is satisfactory?
Well, parks are a key part of the quality of life in Williamson County. They don't come for free, as we've heard. There's a cost to keeping them, even if they're passive parks and are just left open space. There's still maintenance, there's still workmen that have to go out there on a regular boat basis to open and close the parks and take care of them. I think that the Parks Department in Williamson County is a great asset to the county. I think it's as important an asset to the county as the school system is, frankly. I am an advocate of parks. We don't have enough in Spring Hill. So as far as the county is concerned, I think that the more open space that you put aside for parks, the less traffic you're gonna have, I guess, because it's not developed land that's gonna bring more people in to live there. From a standpoint of one of your other questions earlier tonight, what are we doing for the senior citizens? I think passive parks and walking trails and a larger park structure in the county goes towards that need as well. So, yeah, I can't speak to the efficiency and the growth of it, but I do, can speak to the fact that I'm an advocate and a proponent for parks.
All right, Matt Milligan, would you see in the immediate future, like five years, your term that you're running for plus one, the potential for a tax increase in county taxes? And what would it take to have you vote for a tax increase?
Probably an invasion of the body snatchers. We live, and there's no one you're gonna interview tonight who's gonna disagree with this statement. We live in an amazing county. My family lives in Arkansas. I come from Arkansas. Like most of the people in Spring Hill, I'm an immigrant. And every time they come to my home, they say, wow, what a beautiful drive, what a beautiful area. Son, you found a great place to live. That being said, are we spending too much for what we have? Are we spending too much on wants and needs? If I'm elected county commissioner, we're gonna reexamine wants and needs, and we are not gonna raise taxes willy-nilly for wants, and we're not gonna overspend for needs so that we have to come back and spend and raise property taxes or change assessments. We're not gonna do that anymore.
All right. Thank you very much. David Pear, with a million people expected to be in this county by 2040, what can you do specifically to maintain what many people call quality of life, but many people define radically differently?
I think we are gonna grow. I don't think that there's any way to really avoid...
assessments. We're not going to do that anymore.
All right. Thank you very much. David Pear. With a million people expected to be in this county by 2040, what can you do specifically to maintain what many people call quality of life, but many people define radically differently?
I think we are going to grow. I don't think that there's any way to really avoid that. I think it's how we grow. Looking at that and dealing with it before it gets here. The county redid, revised the zoning ordinance a couple of years ago. I think that that's a good start. You mentioned earlier, commercial nodes. You know, I think that identified areas are good ways to do that. I do think that you have to balance the need with, or the reality of growth with a focus on conservation. The new zoning ordinance puts more of an emphasis on clustering, so you preserve more open space when you develop subdivisions. I think that an increased emphasis, I don't know if this is the county's responsibility, but there's a number of other groups in the area, increased emphasis on educating property owners about conservation easements instead of trying to pick a little spot here and there, try to encourage landowners. There are some tax incentives and benefits to doing that. And you can get larger tracts in perpetuity.
All right. Thank you very much. Now, we're going to go to the lightning round, where everybody has 30 seconds to talk about what they feel about if they are elected or re-elected to the county commission, what they hope to see and accomplish. Tommy Little.
Again, we want to thank you all for hosting this forum. It's been informative and a pleasure to be here. I have been on the county commission for eight years. There was a recent article in The Tennessean that stated that Williamson is in the top 10 for the best value for its property taxes in the nation. And I want to continue that. I've been a part of it for the last eight years, and I want to continue to be able to give you the best value for your tax dollar.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Lou Green.
Thank you again for this forum tonight. It's been informative. I represent the 5th District. I've represented it for some time. And I'd like to continue to work with the people in that district, though it has been rezoned or reassigned. The territory has expanded to College Grove, which is, puts me in basically a rural, non-city type district, which has its own unique, different problems, but most of them the same. So I'd like to continue to represent the people in the 5th District as I have in the past. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Greg Lawrence.
Thank you once again, Mark, for having us out tonight for this forum. I am Greg Lawrence. I'm representing District 4. And one of the things I would like to do over the next four years is improve the communication with the citizens of this county. When I moved here 20 years ago, I had very little communication from the commission and knew very little about it until I got actually proactively involved several years ago and started getting emails from some of the commissioners here. Dr. Looney had an article in the paper Sunday about the dismal voting numbers, and probably it will be bad on May 6th, comparatively speaking. And that's not unusual, but that's a two-way street. I think if we improve our communication as from a commissioner's standpoint, we can draw more people in and get them more involved in the local government.
All right. Thank you very much. Elliot Mitchell.
Thank you, Mark, and Susan, and Brentwood Communications for hosting this forum. I agree, it's been a pleasure to be here. My name is Elliot Mitchell. I'm an independent candidate from Spring Hill. I will be on the August election, not on the May election. What I will bring to the seat, if given the opportunity, will be ethical leadership and fiscal responsibility. And I humbly ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Milligan, District 3.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark, Susan. Thank you for the people who are here tonight. If you're watching at home, I don't know where the camera is, but if you're watching at home on your laptop or your television, thank you for taking time to become involved and informed. Like most of the people in Spring Hill, I didn't discover it. I moved here, and I'm an immigrant, and we've seen explosive growth. And that is a problem that Spring Hill is dealing with, that the rest of Williamson County is dealing with too. And the problems in Spring Hill are a good analogy for some of the problems facing the rest of the county. If you elect me, I will bring a commitment to educational excellence, preserving our quality of life, and financial responsibility. Thank you for your vote.
David Pear.
My name is David Pear. I'm a GOP candidate for District 3. I am honored to be able to run. This is a great place to live. I'm not going to mention the specific town where I grew up, but you walk around and you see people, you don't have to ask people where they're from, because you know they were from right there. And this is a different place here, and I think that the diversity is good. I think that I am effective at building relationships and building consensus and will be effective at getting things done.
All right. Thank you very much. Candidates for Districts 3. Now, you took your cards away. I don't know.
Four and five.
Four and five. That was easy. Three, four, and five. The last group is Districts 6, 7, and 8 on the north side.
And if we can just kind of split it into the two sides. Yes, if we can have six, seven, and eight. If we have room, if we need to split one, we'd like not to. So six, seven, and eight.
Thank you so much. Right there.
I'm good at getting lost. How are you? Sweet, very beautiful.
Cindy, if you can get by Paul, then we'll do it that way. And then Bert, if you can sit. By you.
Districts 6, 7, and 8 get the attendance award tonight. And we're glad to have you all here.
It's impossible if you can understand that.
All right, everybody.
Just trying to freshen up the questions.
You've got 90 seconds to answer each question, and you'll get about two questions, and then 30 seconds at the end. Let's see what we have here. Well, let's start with something really broad for Paul Webb. What is the biggest issue that the new county commission will address when seated?
I think the biggest issue.
Okay, now you're on the air, and the clock starts.
Hold on. This is practice for whoever is elected.
All right. That's your question, Mark. I think the biggest question is, how do we maintain this great quality of lifestyle we've heard about tonight and we know about? We have a great community, and that's going to be the challenge. We hear the challenge about maintaining the school system with 1,000-plus new students a year and the need to build schools. And how do we do that without raising taxes when a new high school is, you know, $60 to $75 million apiece? Elementary schools run $30 to $45 million, and middle schools in that same range. That's a big tax thing. You know, $75 million would be a dollar and a quarter tax increase. So how do we do that, maintain our AAA bond rating, and maintain the schools? Because the schools are our number-one economic driving force. That's why people come to Williamson County. I'm biased about Brentwood. Obviously, we have a great quality of life in Brentwood. We've been doing sound financial management. But people move to Brentwood not only for that great quality of life, but it's still the school system. And if we put portables up or have 40 kids in a classroom, then our whole economic system in Williamson County goes down. We don't have new businesses wanting to be here. We don't have new residents wanting to be here to buy our wonderful homes when we get ready to downsize. So I think that's the issue. We've got it good, and we've got to work hard to maintain it, and it's not going to be easy.
Thank you very much. Cindy Miller, let's stay on schools that Mr. Webb brought up. A couple of years ago, the county commission added school resource officers to the elementary schools after having them primarily in high schools and middle schools. Some tragedies around the country led to that. Do you support the continuation of school resource officers in that expense?
Absolutely. I think it's imperative that our school system is a safe place for our children. I think that that is absolutely a necessity that needs to be maintained in the budget for the schools, for the safety of our children. We have to be able to guarantee that when our children are not in our care at home.
All right. Thank you very much. Bert Chalfant. You've been around quite a while, and do you believe that your district gets its return for the taxes that it pays the county?
I'm sorry, would you please repeat that? You say the debt is...
No. Do you believe that your district gets an appropriate return for the amount of taxes that are paid into the county?
No, I do not. Brentwood has always been a higher taxed area for obvious real estate values. And much more of that money moves out from Brentwood to the rest of the county.
Do you think, have an idea for a way to make that better? For example, the indoor sports complex was one way. Do you think that District 7 needs other things from the county?
Well, we had cooperated from a county standpoint. We had made large contributions to Crockett Park in the development of that area, the indoor sports complex, yes. This past year, year and a half, we had set aside $1,600,000 for scale school for improvements there, $6 million for Brentwood Middle School, and $16 million for improvements of Brentwood High School.
All right. Hugh Dupree.
Yes, sir.
Do you think that Williamson Medical Center should be kept or possibly sold?
I don't want to make that call right now, but I certainly think it should be in the open and find out what it's worth, who owns it, how it's run, why it's run, be very open about it.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Tom Bane. The county is $0.5 million in debt, yet it has a AAA bond rating. Are you concerned about the current level of county debt? And do you think there should be a cap?
No to both. If you'll grant me about 30 seconds, this is yesterday's Tennessean.
You've got it.
And it was in the Tennessean yesterday. If you save the paper, go home and read this. "Weebson County Named Tops in Services Provided Tax Value. With its superior school system and low crime rate compared with its low property tax rate, Williamson County is garnering national attention and offering a high return for taxpayers. The county was ranked in the top 10 for best value for its property tax dollars among other U.S. counties according to Smart Alec, an internet-based personal finance system."
All right.
And I look at it that way.
Okay. Thank you very much. Greg Davis. Given that education accounts for more than half the county's budget, and with the new schools underway in Nolansville, how are you going to balance the need for other types of infrastructure?
Well, obviously, that's a balancing act, but it's an act we've been doing for many, many years successfully. Mr. Bane took my little speech there. He quoted it better than I would have. We are doing just that right now. And I would challenge a little bit of the premise of the question. I would say other parts of the county are benefiting from the educational system we have, not just the students and not just the parents that have kids in our schools today. I think everybody benefits. We also have fantastic law enforcement for the dollar. We have a great park system for the dollar that we're putting into it. This is an amazing county. I don't think any areas are getting short-changed, but we are very tight with the money here. We have been for years. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Angela Hoover. Now that the Chamber of Commerce has consolidated and taken on many of the economic development functions, does the county still need to offer incentive packages to attract new businesses and corporations, or does it stand on its own?
Absolutely. I think the county definitely needs to offer those incentive packages to bring more businesses into Williamson County and to continue to keep the tax base growing so that we are able to continue to offer all of these great things, like the wonderful schools. I'm proud to be a product of Williamson County schools, and I'm proud that my parents decided to move here to raise me in such a wonderful county. And I think that if we offer those incentives to businesses to move in, then we will have more businesses come into Williamson County. And yes, we will have to have the infrastructure to, for the people that are moving into Williamson County, but I think that we're able to balance that if we bring more development into the county.
All right. Thank you very much. Jack Walton. How do you think State Route out 840 will impact traffic and development on rural parts of the county? And do you think the planning process is ready for what might happen out there?
Well, we had mentioned earlier about the countywide planned update. And a lot of that took in intersections of 840. The county has just appropriated monies to build two new fire halls along 840 to take care of the traffic. I think there was a fatality there yesterday. So that's something that's much needed. I think over the years, probably beyond my time, I mean, as the county grows, 840 will be like 440 is in Davidson County. It'll just be just something that you use to get on 65 or 40. And I think the county is playing for it. Of course, it took forever to build 840, and I just think that it's, we've got a grasp on it. It will grow. In this planned update, we've got some areas that will be commercial, and the rest of it will be residential.
Thank you very much. Paul Webb. The chairman just talked about, I said I wouldn't do that. Mr. Walton just talked about new fire stations going up on 840. At what point would the county be ready for a non-volunteer fire service?
You know, coming from the Brentwood, it's hard sometimes to look at the needs in the rural parts of the county. And that's part of the education process that someone from suburban areas got to do. And in this case, I've made a lot of attention to fire service. And I think that you've got to look at the current national trends. I mean, we have the Fire Chiefs Association and the insurance agencies that put together those standards. And they're going to drive the needs for that service in the rural areas, because, you know, the better fire protection you have, the lower your health, excuse me, the lower your home insurance is going to be. And also, if that area in the 840, that part of the county, as it grows with both the residential businesses, there's going to be more need, because, as you know, fire departments do more than just put out fires. Many times, they're working wrecks on the interstate. They're handling accidents in the business place with trained paramedics and EMTs. And so at some point, I think the county is going to have to increase the fire service. And maybe it's one of these things that we see going on around the country, where you have a basic trained service supplemented by volunteers. And the more rural areas of the county, I think that's something that will work really well, because your infrastructure costs will be less than having a full-time fire service like you have in Brentwood, Franklin, and Spring Hill. And Nolansville and Arrington are good examples of that that are working right now, and I think we can expand that through the rest of the county.
All right. Thank you very much. Cindy Miller. As administrative costs rise, can you foresee a metro government for Williamson County?
I am all for local government. I am a strong believer that the community needs to be really involved. And I'm just a small-government kind of gal. And with the growth, maybe, I'm naive at this point to think we wouldn't come to that stage, but I really would like to see the community in good control of how we conduct our businesses and our local government here.
All right. Bert Chalfant. What is your position on charter schools, and do you believe that they should be welcomed in Williamson County?
I think it was somebody mentioned before that even put it on TV, let everybody know exactly where we are, how much we owe, who we owe it to, what we own, what we don't own. So I think it ought to be incumbent upon the commission minimally for the fiduciary responsibility to let everybody in the county know exactly where we stand. I don't think that's all done correctly as we stand right now.
What about the cost for such a...
Cost would be minimal. That's not even a player. The cost of telling the public and your constituency what you have, that's not even a player.
All right. Tom Bain. How do you feel about incentives for new businesses in Williamson County?
I think they're needed to compete this day and time. If you look at anywhere else, Nashville Metro, they're doing it. Columbia's doing it. Everybody's doing it. And what I read from yesterday's paper, all the blessings we have here in this county, we still have to do some of that to lure business like Mars to come here. And it's a wonderful place. We... Most of us, anyway, came from somewhere else, and it's a good way to bring new jobs into the county.
Thank you very much. Greg Davis. Brentwood works with Metro and in traffic and intersections and things like that, and do you think the county, Williamson County, should be working more with Metro on shared issues? And in what way?
There's always opportunity for the municipalities to work more closely together. But at this point, if we're getting at mass transit-type questions, I think we do need to be studying that, and we are already at the table from a regional standpoint. And I think that's how mass transit should be addressed from a regional standpoint. We do work fairly well now with the municipalities, both in the county and our surrounding counties. And there are meetings going on and contacts on a regular, every-week basis regarding not only transportation, but many other issues as well. I don't think we have any problems there unless someone proposes mass transit that we don't have the financing for, and that's going to be a huge obstacle towards any type of major transportation issues.
All right. Thank you. Angela Hoover. Do you see the county Parks and Recreation Department as a public asset or a function that could be privatized?
Well, I think it's both. I think it is an asset to have it in the community, but I do think it is something that the county ought not be administering, and I do think it is something that is better suited for the private sector. However, we have to deal with things as they are when we get to it, and the county does the parks and rec, and we already own it. So now we have to find a way for it to maintain those things and for it to pay for itself. I'm very concerned about things in the county that are at a much lower cost from the county government than they are in the private sector, that also the county government is subsidizing and that the county government is paying, is helping to pay for when we could use that money. I think someone said earlier it's about $10 million a year. We could use that money, you know, for other things that are maybe a little bit more important than that, or other things that the private sector cannot do, like police. So I think that that's something that we really need to look at. I think it's a great asset for the community to have it. I just think it needs to pay for itself.
All right. Thank you very much. Jack Walton.
Do you believe that the Williamson County Jail is too small right now? Do you think it needs an expansion? It's only about 12 years old.
Well, the...
Fifteen.
Sheriff... Time flies.
I know.
We're having fun. The last time I was out there, I didn't think it was overcrowded. The sheriff came to us about a year ago and said, hey, the jail, we're at capacity. Some weekends, we have more than capacity. And so we got to work. To give credit to the sheriff, the county's taken in a lot of state inmates, and it's always been a thorn in my side because when we take in these state inmates, and I don't remember the exact cost, but I think an inmate cost us like $38 a day, and the state pays $32 a day. The sheriff, to his credit, was able to get the state to take back a lot of their prisoners. And so that has bought us some time. The sheriff is very creative. We mentioned about buying used patrol cars, and he found them in a state where they have to sell them at 20,000 or 25,000 miles. So we have employees, although the sheriff's an elected official, but all of the department heads are doing a great job in... With finances and to cut costs where it needs to be, and it's a prime example of what the sheriff did. One day, we will need to expand the jail, but I don't think it's in the foreseeable future in the next few years.
All right. Thank you very much. And now it's time for the you time. You have 30 seconds to talk about what you think you can accomplish in the county commission and what you hope for the county. Paul Webb.
Well, thank you, Mark Cook, and the Brentwood Homepage folks for having this forum tonight. I think it's been very beneficial to everyone here in the county. I'm Paul Webb, running for Sixth District County Commission. And what you're going to get with me is you're going to get experience. I've been a public servant since college days and even before with my grandfather. As you know, I've also served eight years as Brentwood City Commissioner, including mayor. We had regional issues tonight. I know, serving on the mayor's caucus, I've served with all the mayors of middle Tennessee, where we've worked together to work out regional problems that affect Brentwood and Williamson County. So I have that experience, and I hope to bring that to the county commission.
Thank you very much. Cindy Miller.
Good evening. Thank you again for sponsoring this event tonight. The reason I'm running is I'm concerned about the debt, and I want to protect our community. I want to get in. I want to roll my sleeves up. I want to do the research and monitor and just monitor the budget and make cuts where necessary and be wise with taxpayer funds, make sure that's done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bert Chalfant.
Thank you, Mark. My name's Bert Chalfant. I'm running for reelection for District Seven. I have been on the commission over 20 years and want to continue. All of the accolades that we've given Williamson County this evening, I consider as an acknowledgement and a support of my campaign. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hugh Dupree.
My name's Hugh Dupree, and I'm also running for commission from the Seventh District. Y'all realize already we're going to have eight new faces on the commission, probably 10 to 12. It's time for change. We need to work on some things. I appreciate your vote.
Thank you. Tom Bain.
Yes, I'm Tom Bain. I'm running for reelection to the Seventh District. And I was sitting here tonight looking out across the crowd, and is there anybody here from Nolansville? It's not my district, but is anybody here from Nolansville? I got some great advice from a former county commissioner from Nolansville, Newt McCord. Newt's an old-timer, or was an old-timer, who lived here in the county for a lot of years, and I asked him, did he have any advice for him, and he said, yes. He said, if you find yourself on the low side of a 23-to-1 vote, you're probably wrong. So I've tried to go by that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Greg Davis.
Thank you, Mark. Greg Davis, an incumbent candidate for District Eight Commissioner. Bottom line, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. I do think some of those things I've read recently about Williamson County, while they sound great, many of them are wrong. We're not in the top 10. We are the best place to live in the United States, and I truly believe that. You get your best return from county government than anywhere else. The best school system than anywhere else. Why would you want to change now? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Angela Hoover.
My name is Angela Hoover. I'm running for county commission, District Eight. I am proud to be a seventh-generation middle Tennessean and a lifelong resident of Williamson County. I'm a product of the Williamson County schools. I am proud to be running on the three ideals, that number one, we need to have low taxes in Williamson County and create efficiency and effectiveness in local government; number two, we need to keep our schools excellent; and number three, we need to keep the quality of life that we have. And finally, I would ask for your vote, Angela Hoover. If you want more information, go to electhoover.com. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Finally, Jack Walton.
Last but not least. I'm Jack Walton, currently a county commissioner in the Eighth District. I've been in this office 16 years. And as was mentioned earlier, we've had six quality commissioners that will retire this year. So experience will mean more than anything coming into the new commission in September. I have that experience. A lot of us do up here. Everybody's giving accolades to the county, and that's not only this commission, but the commissions in the past, and has made this county what it is today, and I intend to keep it that way. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And that concludes the questions and the answers and the candidate forum for county commission. And Susan, do you have anything to say?
Can I talk here? Is it on? Oh, that's okay. I can use this one. I'm on behalf of Brentwood Communications. We would like to thank all of the participants tonight, and we are thrilled with the turnout. We had some, I know, that didn't show up, but it was a stormy night and things happened. But we are thrilled. This was our first forum. It was kind of an experiment for us, and I think it went well, and we hope to have another for the state races before the August primary. I would like to thank Diane Giddens, who served as an integral... Excuse me. Part of our forum tonight, and just to also thank all of the support we have gotten. Again, in all of our websites, brentwoodhomepage.com, franklinhomepage.com, and nolansvillehomepage.com, we have complete Election 2014 sections that have full profiles on all of the candidates you've heard from tonight, as well as those who weren't with us. And we'll continue to add stories and cover the election thoroughly throughout the year. So thank you very much for participating.
Early voting ends tomorrow, if you're watching this live.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you.